We're going to have the prayer led by Councilman Pendergrass, followed by the pledge by Councilman Miles.
Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for bringing us here to do the business of the city of Mendon. I just want to thank you for allowing us to serve, serve the great citizens of Mendon. God, I pray for the citizens of Mendon, those who are experiencing great triumphs and those who are experiencing great trials. Lord, you know them both and you are with them both, Lord, and so I pray for them. God, I pray that you would give us wisdom to make wise decisions on behalf of those who elected us to do so. And I pray that your will be done tonight in Jesus's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to call the May 5th, 2025 C D of Mendon Council meeting to order. I want to welcome everyone that's here. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda? All right. Are there any, there are no additions to the agenda? Are there any comments on any item pertaining to our agenda tonight? All right, there are none. First, we have item number one, adopt the minutes of the Mendon City Council workshop held on April 7th, 2025.
I move to adopt the minutes of the Mendon City Council workshop held on April 7th, 2025 as presented.
I have a motion from Councilman Pendergrass. Second from Councilwoman Mitchell. Any discussion? There is none. Let's vote. This passes unanimously. Next, we have item two, adopt the minutes of the Mendon City Council regular session held April 7th, 2025.
I move to adopt the minutes of the Mendon City Council regular session held on April 7th, 2025 as presented.
I have a motion from Councilman Pendergrass. And a second from Councilman Roy. Any discussion or questions on this? There are none. Let's vote. And this passes unanimously. Next, we have item number three, an audit presentation for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Mrs. Hendry and Mr. Green.
Good evening. I'm Jenny Henry with Allen Grady Williamson, the Audit Manager for the city of Mendon, along with Tim Green, the partner with our firm. So I wanted to go over a few items to point out in the audit report. I would like to remind everyone that this report is a public document that can be found on Legislative Auditor's website, along with past years, just like every municipality for the state. The audit report with the opinion can be found on page five. The opinion, as well as in the previous years, is an unmodified opinion. Okay, that's saying that we're not recommending any modifications be made to the report, and so that can be found on page five. The next, we'll look at the governmental funds. Now, this would include your general fund, and that can be found on page 30 on Statement E. We had the general fund, and we have several other major funds. So it's the general sales tax, the sewage sales tax, the ARPA, which is your rescue plan money from COVID, and non-major governmental. Non-major governmental means all these that's broken down in the back of the report, which would be your TIF funds, the STEP program, and the drug seizure. Okay, so that number is broken down further. The general fund, the change in fund balance on page 30 shows that there was a decrease in the fund balance of the general fund of $358,000, and that's just rounded. There was a decrease in the sales tax of $472,000, a decrease in the sewage sales tax of $259,000. There was increase in the rescue plan money, because you received that money in advance, so you've been able to draw interest on that money. There was a decrease in the non-major governmental of $70,000, and that had to do with your capital projects where money was transferred to the general fund for some street repairs. On page 32, well, on 33 is the utility fund, the change in net position. And this year, there was an increase in that position of 3.1 million for your utility fund. Last year, there was a decrease of $80,000 in that fund. And that was because the purchase of power, your cost, was down for purchase of power, your expense for that this year. There are a couple of fiduciary funds I just wanted to point out to make sure that you noted, and that is on page 37. Okay, there's the Pension and Other Employee Benefit Trust Fund, and that is audited by another auditor, and we do mention that in the report. And then the Custodial Fund Police Bond Fund, okay? Then you can see the financials for that. This year, y'all did have to have a single audit. If a government agency gets federal coverage of over $750,000 for the expenditures, then you have to have a federal audit. So if we look on page 109, these are the expenditures that were covered by federal funds. Last year, y'all only had like $200,000 that was covered. This year, it was 4.6 million. So there were three big grants. One was the airport, and this had to do with a taxiway, a parallel taxiway. One was Community Development Block Grant, and this had to do with a sewer project. And the other one was the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. Some of this money was spent for the Public Works Control Center. Some was Community House. I think there was a REC Center study, and then there may have been a demolition to do with that. So we tested three of these programs. We tested the Airport Improvement Program. We tested the CDBG, and we tested the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund for that. And so Mr. Green is going to go over the results of our testing and the findings.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and mayor and guests and employees and others that's with us today. If you would, I was just going to go over the, we have both management letter items and we have what we call findings and so forth. Management letter items are more things that will help improve your system and is a recommendation to you that you should do, adopt them and so forth. And might just start out talking about what's on page 121 of your document. This lists the status of prior year management letter items, and as part of our standards, we have to comment on any findings from previous years. There were two listed there, the time clock system, and I'll talk about it a little bit further in just a second, and then also the disbursement process. This was in reference to the police bond fund bank account and the police step bank account that we thought that would be better if it was all under the accounting department, and that did, you did switch that over this year. So you accomplished that one, so that's not, that got completed this year, so we're pleased with that. On the time clock system, this was reflected on page 121 as a prior year item. And if you flip back to page 119, this is the current year management letter item. And we just have this one item that we are still recommending that you consider fully adopting that citywide. You started, I guess, three or four years ago. Ms. April was promising that she was going to get all of that implemented, and she's about to leave us, so I think her time's running out. So I guess we'll get that adopted this month. But the time clock system being more serious, we do think that's important. You made a lot of progress on this. You had several departments prior to the last couple of years that was on the system. This past year, if you look down at the bottom of page 119, the water, the wastewater and steam production plant began using the time clock system. So another two or three departments adopted the system, and we just now got to work on the police and fire and electrical line crew. They're kind of maintaining some manual documents or manual spreadsheets, and we think having it on the time clock system consistent with everybody else would be a better system. And so we recommend or encourage you to continue to do that. We have, as we will when we're talking in just a second, on the findings, the management letter items, we've talked and went over those with management, and they're already working on trying to get those implemented, et cetera. On page 116, if there's, if there's any questions on the management letter item, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Okay, if not, on page 116, this is the status of the prior year findings and management's responses to it, and we had two comments there. One was the controls over financial reporting. I'll talk about that a little bit more in just a second. And then also the budget adoption on the STEP program. That was adopted this year, so that one got cleared up. And so we just have one prior year comment that's being rolled forward or prior year finding, and that's control over financial reporting. But if you notice on 116, there's about five bullets there of items we thought that could be improved. And if you'll flip over to page 112, is this, is a current year finding concerning these same controls over financial reporting. But if you notice on the condition found, there's only three bullets, and we've talked with management, we've worked with Melanie, and we've got a plan to meet again in August to go back over these and address them and to make sure that those will be cleared up for this time, this next year, the September 2025 audit. And we're confident that that will be the case and et cetera. So there's a lot of improvement that's made on it, and we're hoping that this year that that will go completely away. On the bottom of page 112 is finding number 24002, and this is condition rating for the street system. When Gatsby adopted statement number 34 back in 1999, I think it was, they allowed governments who didn't want to go through all the extent of depreciating over item and so forth, that for infrastructure such as streets, you could have an alternative program that you didn't have to go through all that laborious work of depreciating items. And you could, if you made a commitment that, okay, we've got a street system, have a rating system that says, okay, zero to 10, 10 being the best, so to speak, if you declare you're going to maintain your streets at a seven level, and you do assessment periodically that says, okay, we've checked it, and yes, we are maintaining it. If you did that, you did not have to depreciate the assets, and it made it a lot easier. And y'all, y'all are one of the ones, I think, the only government we deal with that actually uses this modified approach. It's a good approach. It says in the standards, though, that if you don't maintain it the level that you say you're going to maintain it at, then you have to take and go back to the depreciation method. And so we've had a few years, I guess, that schedule, let me just show you the schedule in particular that I'm referring to. It's probably about page 80. If you'll flip back to exhibit three on page 80. This condition rating was performed by city personnel and so forth, and it shows for the last seven years, I guess, 2019 through 2024. It kind of shows the number of streets and the percentage of streets that are in good or better condition. And you see that about six, two-thirds of them are in good or better condition. And then it shows what's in substandard condition, which would be just the opposite part of your 100%, and that would be the 33%. But as a part of the rating and so forth, you kind of established that, I think you established in your rating, if you read down to the bottom, the system based upon condition rating system, in your case, from one to five. The rating scale you use to classify roads in good or better condition, four to five, fair condition, three, substandard, one to two. Roads which are rated one are considered a highest priority for improvement, and it's the city's policy to maintain at least 75% of your street system at a good or better condition. So that was your policy that you adopted back a few years ago. If you'll notice up above, we're kind of maintaining it at 68% or so, and we've had several years where we've been under that 75% threshold. In the standards, it doesn't say, okay, after two years, after four years, you've got to go back to the depreciation method. It just says after a reasonable period of time, and as we kind of got to looking at it, we thought, okay, after seven years, well, that's kind of sufficient amount of time, that you need to get those back in the condition that you say that you, you're going to maintain them at. Otherwise, you got to revert to depreciation. So we're just kind of declaring that it seems to us that it's been a reasonable period of time, and so you either got to go back to depreciating it or being, sharing with you the whole standard. The whole standard says if you got to maintain a certain level, and one easy way to do that is that we're going to adopt a policy that says we're going to maintain it at 65%. And if you maintain it 65%, then you can keep on with the modified approach. So anyway, that's what the standard allows you to do. So anyway, you need either to go back to depreciating it, or we would need to change that standard, or maybe there are some things you could do to improve it, maybe to get it to 70% level, and if so, you could just change your policy to that. So you have some options as to what you want to do. But I think probably in this fiscal year, we need to take action and to either change our policy as to what our threshold is, or we would need to go back to depreciating. So that comment is a new one for this year. And going back to the comments, back to page 112, I guess, from 113, was the one we just talked about as far as condition rating. And then on page 114, this is in reference to the Airport Improvement Program. You had quite a bit of money, as Jenny mentioned, to mend to go, I think a couple of million dollars or so that was spent on the runway and so forth. And as part of that grant, we have specific steps we got to go through and test as part of that. And one of the requirements was, did you file an annual report? And in our review of it, and with talking with your consultants, they thought that the reporting should been, would be due at the end of the contract or end of the project, not annually. But the rules kind of say it has to be done annually. So anyway, that was a comment, one of the findings that we had, and it's in reference to your federal programs. And I think you just need to get the reports filed and be okay on that. So anyway, you wound up with three comments as far as findings. Again, I think there was great improvement on the condition over financial reporting. The condition rating for the street system, you just need to consider that and make a decision on that. And the Airport Improvement Program, now that you're kind of aware, that just needs annual reporting. I think that's simple to fix. And then the other item was just the matter as far as the time clock system and trying to get everybody on that program and so forth. But anyway, overall, not bad as far as your comments and so forth and your financials, and be happy to answer any questions about the comments that's in your report.
Let the headline say, great improvement from city auditors. Are there any questions for them? All right, there being no questions, I would entertain a motion that we accept the audit. I have a motion from Councilman Roy. Second from Councilwoman Mitchell. Any discussion? All right, there being none, let's vote. And this passed unanimously.
Might just make a comment. We do appreciate everybody's help with the city. Y'all have been great. We even got, for the councilmembers, we did get a little work out of the mayor and so forth. But mainly, we got them from Melanie and her staff and April and all the other, Kathy Newer and et cetera on the federal programs and et cetera. And your staff was really great and helped us, and we appreciate that very much, and don't let that go unnoticed at this point.
Thank you very much. A lot of work goes into the audits, and so I would also reiterate Melanie and April and Kathy Newer, and on and on and on. A lot of good work, Vicky. Thank y'all very much. So thank you too, guys. Appreciate y'all. You know, the audit is how we know if we're doing our jobs right or not, and it keeps us accountable to the citizens. And this is your demonstration that we're trying our best to run the city as appropriately and right as we can. So thank y'all very much. Oh, next we have item number four, adopt ordinance number 1154, an ordinance to authorize an act of sale by the city of Mendon to sell certain adjudicated properties, partial number 128698, and further providing with respect thereto. This is a property Kimberly Baez bought, and it's through what the state allows, which is the Lot Next Door program, and that was facilitated through the EMP attorney, EMP consulting attorney Wesley Johnson that came recommended by our great city attorney, Attorney Yokum. He's in the back. You are welcome to take your rightful seat in the front, so I can pick up on any cues that I am out of line. But she was able to purchase this. If we had the blessings of the council, what's the wishes of the council on this? I have a motion from Councilman Miles.
Second.
And a second from Councilman Thomas. Any discussion or question on this? Okay, there's none. Let's vote. All right, and that passes unanimously. Next, we have item five, adopt resolution declaring certain city of Mendon property as surplus and fixing the terms of the sale miscellaneous items. And so we have a list of, and I don't number things in alphabet, that's why our agenda items are numbered, but we have a list from A to O of different items that'll be available for sale on gov deals. It's everything from several fleet vehicles from the police department, some check signers. I don't even really know what that is. Some typewriters, I don't halfway know what that is. Bookcases, old cabinets. Guys, I told y'all last month, we have like 75 years' worth of junk to surplus. You will never hear the end of it. We will be surplusing for the rest of our lives. And so that being said, what's the wishes of the council on this surplus resolution?
Some move.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Mitchell. Second from Councilman Roy. Any discussion or question on this? There's none. Let's vote. This passed unanimously. Next, we have item number six, municipal water pollution prevention. We have to have this resolution passed every year through DEQ. It's an annual thing. What's the wishes of the council? What's the wishes of the council?
I move to adopt the resolution for municipal water pollution prevention as presented.
Have a motion from Councilman Miles.
Second.
Second from Councilman Pendergrass. Any discussion or question on this? There's none, let's vote. This passes unanimously. Next, we have item number seven, appointment, amended Main Street program downtown development commission. This is to potentially appoint Casey Kendrick to fill the unexpired term of Sarah Overall, whose term will expire in September of 2026. And Casey's in here? Would you just stand up for us, just so we can make this as embarrassing as possible? What's the wishes of the council on this?
Upon the recommendation of Main Street Economic Development Director Sarah Overall, I move to approve the appointment of Casey Kendrick to the amended Main Street program downtown development commission to fill the vacant term as presented.
Have a motion from Councilman Pendergrass.
Second.
Second from Councilman Thomas. Any discussion or questions on this? There being none, let's vote. And this passes unanimously. Let's give her a hand for serving, would you? Thank you, Casey, thank you very much. Next, we have appointments, amended downtown residential historic commission. Downtown appointment of Derek Parrish to fill the expired term of Alicia Adams, whose term expired December 31, 2024. His term will expire on December 31, 2028. And then an appointment, well, let's vote on them one at a time, which will throw Jeff for a loop. Oh, can I get a motion, we vote on this? I got a motion from Councilman Roy.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Mitchell. Dick, are you here? Would you stand up for us? All in favor, let's vote. And this passing unanimously. Let's give them a hand for serving. Can you handle the curve ball? Okay. Next, we have residential reappointment of Elizabeth Hollinsworth. She's not here, huh? Okay, that's good. Whose term, or it's fine. Whose term expired December 31, 2024. Her term will expire if, if reappointed on December 31, 2028. What's the wishes of the council?
Some move.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Miles.
Second.
Second from Councilman Thomas. Any discussion or question on this? All right, there is none, let's vote. And that carries unanimously. Thank you all for serving. We appreciate your service. Next, we have item number nine, authority for Mayor Cox to execute an agreement, an engagement agreement to retain the services of Michael J. Basada of Butler Snow LLP to serve as outside counsel for the city of Mendon under the supervision of the city attorney. This is to hire a bonding attorney for our recreation complex enhancement project. We, again, goes back to how we want to run the city. We want to do things as appropriately and as rightly as we can. And so we felt like Mike Basada would be good legal counsel from a bonding aspect, although we may very likely not bond. But we still need to go through the approval process and get all the clearances and blessings legally we can. So I would request a motion to hire this attorney.
Move to authorize Mayor Nick Cox to execute an engagement agreement to retain the services of Michael Basada of Butler Snow LLP to serve as outside counsel for the city of Mendon under the supervision of the city attorney, subject to attorney review.
I have a motion from Councilman Miles. Second from Councilman Roy. Any discussion or question on that? All right, there is none, let's vote. This passes unanimously. Next, we have item number 10, decommissioning, commissioning and leveling of the dilapidated structure located at 1401 Taunton Street. That's parcel number 128874. This is the old wildlife building the city owns on Taunton Street. It's across from what is currently the street department. And the building, the porch is falling off of it right now. The roof is gone. I believe we have it tarped up a bit. The building has no really foreseeable potential use in the future. And so I would like the authority to, from y'all, to go ahead and, and decommission and level that dilapidated structure. What's the wishes of the council on that?
Move to decommission and level the dilapidated structure, structure located at 1401 Taunton Street, parcel number 128874 as presented.
Have a motion from Councilman Miles.
Second.
Second from Councilman Thomas. Any discussion or question on that? Okay, there being none, let's vote. This passes unanimously. Next, we have item number 11, donation of parcel number 128751, which is 700 Constable Street to the Webster Parish Police Jury. This building is the old armory building that was donated to us from the state many years ago for, originally for use of a recreation complex. And then over time, it was no longer used for that, and it was then used for our water, wastewater distribution department. And now that we've done the public works consolidation plan, the water wastewater department will be moving to the public works complex down by, on Hinton Street, on Babs, by Babs Park, rather. And so we don't have a real good use for this. The parish has identified a need for it. And if I could get the authority, I would like for us to transfer this to the police jury, subject to attorney review and approval.
Mayor, I move to double parcel number 12, page 74, which is 700 Constable Street, to the Webster Parish Police Jury, pending attorney review.
Okay. Have a motion from Councilman Roy.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Mitchell. Any discussion or questions on this? Okay, then let's vote. This passes unanimously. Next, we have condemned property, 806 Peach Street. Is there anyone here representing this property that's 806 Peach Street? It's my understanding that we have not been able to reach anyone. Our hopes were that tonight someone representing this property would show up. But since they haven't, we need to appoint a curator in this matter and go ahead and make all attempts that we can to contact this property owner at 806 Peach Street. Can I get a motion to do so?
Move to authorize Mayor Cox to appoint a curator in this matter.
Okay, have a motion from Councilman Miles.
Second.
Second from Councilman Thomas. Any discussion or question on this? There are no, there is no discussion, let's vote. This passes unanimously. Next, we have item number 13, condemned property, 700 Sibley Road. Is there anyone here from 700 Sibley Road representing that property? 700 Sibley Road. I do know that today, a demolition permit was pulled for this. And this is the old Bradford Fish Market. Some of you may know of that, that structure. But I do know the permit was pulled. I think it would be totally appropriate to go ahead and condemn it for 30 days because it's, it's going to be torn down before then is the intent. So what's the wishes of the council?
I'm moved to authorize Mayor Nick Cox to issue an order to declare the property condemned and further the order to demolition of any structures located thereon and the cleaning of the light within the next 30 days of this date.
I have a motion from Councilman Miles. Second from Councilman Roy. Any questions on this? Okay, there are none, let's vote. This passes unanimously. Next, we have item number 14, the budget financial report for March 2025. Ms. Melanie Langford, city clerk.
Good afternoon, everyone. Hope y'all are doing well. For March of 2025, total sales tax collected was $860,000. March of 2024, we only collected $751,000. So we did see an increase of 14.49 percent. Ms. Cindy said the increase was due to retail sales, internet, new construction, and we did see a pretty large increase in delinquent payments. They totaled at $43,000 for the month. Cash and bank, we ended at $22,561,705. It was a decrease of $244,000. And I did place a copy of the budget report on y'all's desk for y'all's review. And just to kind of mimic what everybody else said, I just want to thank the auditors for all y'all's work and Tyler, Ms. Kathy, and especially the accounting department, especially Elizabeth. And so that's all I have of them.
Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Langford? Okay, thank you. Next, we have item 15, that's the fire report for April 2025. And Tony Hall is here with that tonight, not Fire Chief Brian Williams.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. We had a total of 39 fires for last month with one structure fire, three vehicle fires, four miscellaneous fires, five public service calls, one rescue call, two hazmat-related calls, 15 false alarms, and eight fire alarms.
All right, are there any questions? Well, while we have the opportunity, thank you for what you do, sir. Appreciate you. Next, we have item number 16, the police report, Police Chief Jared McGyver.
Okay, so would ask the council upon review of city fines collected that they would adopt the police report. Total fines collected, $10,318 for the month of April.
You had before you the police report with all of its details. Are there any questions about the police report? Since there are no questions, I would entertain a motion that we accept the police report for the month of 2025.
I move to accept the police report for the month of, March 2025 as presented.
I have a motion from Councilman Pendergrass with a second from Councilman Miles. Any other discussion on this? Okay, let's vote. And this carries unanimously. All right, are there any announcements or comments from anyone in the public? All right, I'll start on my right. Chief McGyver, do you have any final word?
Just for the loss of the two-year-old that we had in the, had in the city recently, you know, prayers with family members also that it's still under investigation, and there's still a lot of things that we're looking at and putting puzzle pieces together. That's, that's it for now.
Councilman Miles?
I have nothing.
Okay, Councilman Thomas?
I'd just like to get off with the chief saying.
Okay. Councilwoman Mitchell?
None.
Councilman Roy?
Sir.
Councilman Pendergrass?
Nope.
All right. All right, um, there's a lot on my mind, but I'm going to go to something that's very important to me. Mike and April, which did not know I was going to do this, would y'all stand up? Mike Aguilar and April, they are husband and wife, even though they have set apart from one another, not intentionally. You know, they are moving at the end of this month. And I, I tell you, these are, this is a loss for the city. And I normally don't say a whole lot, but these are, these are two good city amended employees, and they're going to be dearly missed. And I think they have the whole community support behind them wherever they do. They're going to pursue just lifelong goals. But while I had you both here, and that's by chance, I didn't ask them to come, I do think we owe them applause for all their hard work and their years of service. So thank you, and may God bless y'all where you go. And I, I told, I gave a job reference for April, and one of my friends called and asked me about April. I said, you know, April's a kind of employee, you can say, drive to Indiana and call me when you get there, and I'll tell you why you went. And she'd go. And you don't find that kind of loyalty from just anybody. She's a, they're, they're both very hardworking, dedicated people. So I wanted to take that personal privilege. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned.